James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here's tonight's meeting agenda.
I'll call this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors to order for a regular meeting. Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Palatin District. Ms. Knoll?
Present.
Ms. Knoll represents the Stonehouse District. Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District. Mr. McGlynn?
Here.
Mr. McGlynn represents the Roberts District and is Vice Chair of the Board. Mr. Eisenhower?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhower represents the Jamestown District and is Chair of the Board. Sitting to my far left is Adam Kinsman County Attorney, and I'm Scott Stevens County Administrator, and it's my pleasure to be clerk to the board.
Normally, we begin our meetings with a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. And our pledge leader unfortunately is a young person who wasn't able to get here this evening. So, we have asked Mr. Tubbs, and he has nominated Drew Williams to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, if you would. If you could give us about fifteen seconds of silence before we have the pledge, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Come up to the podium up there.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Drew? I got a small token for you. You get a county pin on some of our logo stuff. Thank you, I appreciate you for calling in. Next on our agenda, we have presentations, and we will start with the James City County Police Department. Canines, Chief Jamison to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'm here today to introduce you to our newest members of our police department, Canine Maverick to my right, and Canine Bailey to my left. Canine Officer Bailey is almost a two-year-old female yellow lab. Her specialties are human tracking and narcotics odor detection. Bailey comes to James City County Police Department straight from her training at Ventosa Kennels in Scotland Neck, North Carolina, where she and her handler, NPO Ryan Ellis, trained hard for eight to ten hours a day for six weeks. Bailey's abilities to sniff out people or narcotic odor is impressive, to say the least. A Canine Officer Maverick is a two-and-a-half-year-old male German shorthaired pointer. His specialties are also human tracking and narcotics odor detection. Maverick also joins us from Ventosa Kennels, where he and his handler, Officer Drew Crockett, again, trained for eight to ten hours a day for six weeks. Maverick, as you could probably already tell, is not only strong-willed and independent, but is a confident problem solver with an unyielding determination to get every job done his way, which we're still working through. To maintain their canine certifications, Bailey and Maverick are required to complete sixteen-hour training each month. As some of you know, we held a swearing-in ceremony for both our canines on December twentieth, and wanted to bring them here today to introduce them to you, as well as our community. Since coming to James City County and working in patrols where they're assigned, both Bailey and Maverick have been very productive work in narcotic scent detection. They have assisted with three open-air sniff operations with our Tri-Rivers Drug Task Force, have been both deployed in tracks related to criminal offenses. Maverick was actually used today on a track. Bailey and Maverick have had twenty-seven, and this is in a month and a half at the most, narcotic scent deployments, two tracking deployments, which have led to eleven alerts for illegal narcotics, which led to arrests. The alerts were for cocaine, heroin, meth, and fentanyl. I have the both handlers here today that can answer any questions you may have, but I want to introduce you to them, and we're excited to have them. This is the first canine program we've had for the James City County Police Department. I want to thank you, I want to thank Mr. Stevens and Mr. Reinhimer for this opportunity. We have two great handlers here as well that have been through a lot of training. So, if you have any questions, we certainly answer them.
Thank you, Chief. We're absolutely thrilled to have them here, and we're very impressed. Any questions or comments from the Board members that you'd like to?
Well, so today, you went out, we have a missing young person right now in James City County, and so I take it Maverick went out and assisted with that. How quickly does it take to get either Bailey or Maverick on the scent to start the tracking?
So, it depends on, you know, before we're off duty. I was coming on in fifteen minutes, I was already dressed when I got the call to come out. Once we get there, try to establish where the last time, or what time the last time they were seen was, any direction of travel they may have gone, which would help us try to help cast them, hey, this is the direction, smell this. An article that smells like that person, so they can differentiate, because what they're smelling, what they're smelling, he doesn't like scent still, what they're smelling is ground disturbance, and then if someone else kind of intersects that path, he has to figure out, is this ground disturbance the same person or not? So, having an article that smells like that person lets us know if this is the same one or...
Just for reference, I trained with Maverick and actually walked into the woods for about twenty minutes, different directions and across the trail, and left the scent behind of a shirt I had, and within, I think it was seven or eight minutes, Maverick found me. So, phenomenal work that they both do, and then their narcotics detection work, they've already yielded great results, so.
And are they around your, is Bailey around your family or around friends that when, is, does it, is part of your family, so to speak?
Yes, ma'am. So, she goes home with me every day. She lives in her kennel mostly, but she will play with my personal dog and my daughter sometimes as well. We try to keep that a little bit separate, because she is a working dog, so we don't want her to be a house dog, per se.
Right.
So, when they get love, they're usually out working, and they work for that love. So, it's like their paycheck.
So cute.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate the opportunity to meet them.
Thanks so much.
And thank you to the officers, too, for all the time you put into this. I know this is a lot of hard work.
We appreciate it. Really cool.
We appreciate it.
Can we get a picture with the board and the dogs?
And with the dogs, yeah.
One dog might be on the left, one on the right, just to keep them away from each other. We can certainly do that.
That's a good picture with you guys and the dogs. Our next presentation is lifesaving recognition, and I'm going to defer to Ms. Larson, who is the Berkeley District Supervisor, to make the award.
Anna, Alexa, and Colin, if you'll come up here, that'd be great. So, it's really hard to follow dogs and children, I think, but in this particular instance, this is a very important follow, and I want to thank Mr. Tubbs for bringing this to our attention. On the afternoon of twenty-fifth of January in 2025 in Green Springs West, Colin Fitzgerald, Anna and Alexa Hugh became local heroes when they rescued two ten-year-old fourth-grade boys who had wandered approximately thirty feet from the shore of a nearby icy pond in your neighborhood, right? Yep. With temperatures having plummeted to freezing or below for weeks, the conditions on the pond were not good, as you can imagine. The four-and-a-half-foot-tall boys broke through the ice and freezing water estimated to be fifteen or twenty feet deep. Their rescuers saw the event and immediately ran to their aid, calling to their parents as they ran to the pond while notifying James City County 911. All five youngsters were in the frigid water, battling the biting cold and the threat of hypothermia. Realizing the danger, the teenagers acted swiftly and decisively, with the support of their parents, family, and neighbors, who quickly mobilized to assist. A creative solution emerged. Using available extension cords, the group fashioned a makeshift tow rope. This idea provided the necessary lifeline, allowing the rescuers to pull the two stranded boys and Anna, Colin, and Alexa safely back toward shore despite the treacherous icy conditions. By the time emergency services arrived, all five had been brought to safety and were warming up in the shelter of someone's home. The quick thinking, resourcefulness, and teamwork demonstrated during this rescue not only averted a potential tragedy, but also underscored the spirit of community and heroism. Indeed, these teenagers and the community that supported them proved that courage and collaboration can light the way even in the darkest, coldest of times. Mr. Tubbs, you wrote a beautiful thing, I must say. So, I want to tell you a little bit about Anna. She is Jamestown Class of 2025, plays lacrosse for Jamestown, and was on the O Crew. For those of you that don't know the O Crew, what that is, that is a orientation crew for when freshmen come into the school or new students. So, right then, from the get-go, you had a personality that wanted to help others, and I think that's to be commended. A member of the National History Honor Society, and will be attending UVAys next year to play lacrosse, and you're a lifeguard. Yeah, that came into play definitely. So, your sister is Jamestown Class of 2025, plays lacrosse for Jamestown High School, is involved with Jamestown High School Musical and Theater, member of the National Theater Honor Society, and you'll be attending CNU, and you're also a lifeguard. That's great. And I'm sure their principal, Howard Townsend, at Jamestown High School is very proud of them. And their parents are Eric and Kate, who are here today, and thank you for raising such wonderful young women that wanted to step in and help out. That's to be commended. And Colin is a senior at War Hill, Class of 2025, Key Club Representative, Senior Class Historian on the War Hill Swim Team, loves beach and surfing. I think your hair kind of gave that away. Does plan to go to college, just not sure where yet, but is interested in business and construction. And his principal's Michelle Newcomb, another very proud principal. She could not be here this evening. And your parents are Stephanie and John, and again, thank you, you've raised a wonderful young man. And I was sharing with them that I live in First Colony, and we actually have had instances of some young people going out on our lake, which is not iced, it's not been cold here at all enough to freeze lakes, and so, please, don't, if you see anyone doing that, please tell them to get off as quickly as possible. But actually, a former neighbor of mine lost her brother in Queens Lake many years ago, went out on the ice, he and a friend, and he and his friend both lost their life. And so, you really did life-saving, and I hope that's something that you'll always remember. And obviously, you're young people that will step in, and we need people like you, and you give us hope for the future. So, thank you, and let me get your certificates, I forgot them after the podium.
Yes.
Congratulations, guys, very much. Aaron, it's funny you coming out to the picture as well.
to present. I notice the theme in this.
Chairman, members of the Board, on January twenty-seventh, just a couple days after the rescue I just mentioned, we had two dogs go onto ice on a pond, Richardson Mill Pond at the backside of Stonehouse along Six Mount Zion at the New Kent County line. So, we were dispatched to that. Some of those members are with us today. We sent a number of our crews there, some from the local station, Station One, and then because of the nature of the call, we responded various people with additional training from across the county to assemble a crew to make sure we had all of the right safety measures in place, and boat crews, and all the things we may need. So, behind me, we have a couple folks here, we have Captain Blake Hudgens, who entered the water, come on up. Captain Matt Mitchell, who was part of our rescue crew that day, and Captain Brian Hinesman. Those folks, Captain Hudgens entered the water to rescue the dog. When we arrived, one dog had made it safely out, and there was one remained in the water. Captain Hudgens entered the water, being tended by Captain Hinesman and Captain Mitchell, and we wanted to recognize them. Also with us, see, in the back, Dan Erby, who was our first one on scene, and then also our Fire Marshal, Assistant Fire Marshal Jared Randall, who helped carry the dog back to shore, back up to the vehicles, where we could get him inside of one of our trucks to try to re-warm them. So, both dogs were rescued and made it safely out, and we were able to work with the dog owners to get them to emergency care and take care of them. So, I think it's another great reminder, as you mentioned the last one, that you may see ice and may think it's okay to walk out on. We had had some cold temperatures, but to Ms. Larson, to your point, not enough to support the weight of, in this case, even the dogs walking out on top of the ice. So, we appreciate all the work that they did. Certainly takes some additional training and some additional equipment, and actually that day, we had just put some new equipment within a couple hours on our rescue truck, some cold-water survival suits, dry suits, to enter the water with. So, the timing of it couldn't have been more convenient, so.
Tremendous.
I just have to tell you, thank you so much. This is for all of us who are dog owners and dog lovers. I know I had one time when I thought I might have to go into the pond down near my house, because one of my idiot dogs ran out on the ice. But I'm so glad you were able to affect the rescue, so our congratulations and our sincere thanks.
Thank you. Can we get a picture?
Thank you. I will go through them in the order that were received. And I would remind all of our speakers, when you come up, please make sure you state your name and address into the mic for the public record. Our first public comment is Doug Wisnewski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors, fellow residents. My name is Doug Wisnewski, I live at 4740 West Hampton. It's the Colon Heritage Subdivision, but today I'm representing Triangle Stepping Stones. Triangle Stepping Stones is the host for twelve-step recovery groups here in James City County. You may have seen our building and wondered what the heck is going on there. We're right off of 199 on Lake Powell Road. It's a sign with a pretty nondescript house that sits behind it. We host there twenty-two twelve-step recovery group meetings each week. We host Alcoholics Anonymous, Narcotics Anonymous, Eating Disorders Anonymous, Al-Anon Family Groups, and Crystal Meth Anonymous. In the course of a year, we don't know for sure, because there is no attendance taken, as you can imagine, we host over twenty thousand people, all of whom are seeking recovery from substance use disorders of all kinds. It's an important job, it's an important facility. We've been there for fourteen years, kind of flying under the radar. We've been renting the facility, and now, with the help of a great capital campaign, we raised enough money to buy the facility. We didn't exactly buy it, we put down enough money for Town Bank to give us a loan to buy the facility. So, now we're owners, and that fundamentally changes our relationship with James City County. Before, we were renters, and now, we're property owners. And with that, I just, there's a few folks on the staff that I'd like the Supervisors to hear the names of. Deputy Administrator Brad, of course, Head of Social Services, Barb, they have been very, very generous with their time and their advice for us as we sort of navigate this new world of relationship with James City County. Although we've been here a long time, we're a 501(c)(3), now, as property owners, it's different. I would like to point out to the Supervisors and to the public, nobody gets paid there. It's all volunteers, it's all run on voluntary effort. Our expenses are about forty thousand dollars a year. That's all in. That's the rent, now mortgage, lights, utilities, toilet paper, the whole nine yards. And we're proud of what we do. For the Supervisors, we have put in a request through Barb for a small grant. That's not really why I'm here. If you choose to spend that money or appropriate that money, that's fine. But more important for us, as members of Triangle Stepping Stones, is to let the public know this important place for people in James City County. Again, I'm so proud of the people who come there every day, some of whom are in trouble, let's be honest, and they need a place where recovery happens. That's Triangle Stepping Stones. Right on Lake Powell Road, you'll see our sign. With that, subject to your questions, that concludes my brief. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next speaker is Ed Sadler.
Good evening, my name's Ed Sadler. I live at 4909 West Moreland, which is a small subdivision, but it's across the street from the fire station on Old Town Road, so that's where I am. But I'm not here due to where I live. I am here representing the British and Import Car Club, who for the first time in twenty-five years is trying to, or at least intending to, hold our annual car show in James City County. And we knew when we proposed that change that it would come with different rules and regulations, but, and we entered into a contract, basically, with the outlets mall to have our car show there. And indeed, there were several things in there that we didn't have to do when we had it at the High Street Shops at their parking garage for the previous years. But a few days ago, we ran into another possibility that we were going to need to get a special events permit, and so they asked me to take a look at it. So, I pulled up the application, and the second requirement on there was that it takes place in an open space. And I thought, well, no, this isn't, the outlet mall is not a county open space. And I thought, but I better check a little more having history with things like this. So, I went online, I checked the ordinance, and indeed, the ordinance that created it also said takes place in an open space or a road or the right-of-way. And I gave you a packet today, so I'm going to try to go through this pretty briefly, because everything you need to know, I think, is there probably more than you want to know. But at any rate, I went further. I thought, maybe they redefined open space for the purpose of this. It's not in the list of items that were in the definitions. They chose to define the road, the right-of-way, open events, music festivals, et cetera, but they did not redefine open space. I went further, I asked for a list of James City County open spaces. It came up with a list of nine for me, and none of those nine is where was the mall. Went further, and it gave me where you address open space in your park's master plan, and there it defines it also, and what its purpose is, what its long range is, what its criteria is for an open space. So, I thought, we're clear, we're good. We've got a contract with a private entity, and we're having it on a mall, they park a lot of cars there, what's ours? But we heard from the, one of the employees, permiters at Community Development, and their opinion was this ordinance meant that every outdoor event in James City County, no matter where it was held, needed this permit. And I chose to question that, because it's like, it's very clear. It states in your application, it states in your criteria, states in the ordinance, open space, and you didn't give it a different definition. And here is the definition. And here is the definition and it's speci- some of the legal descriptions specifically exclude commercial parking lots. So at any rate, I ended up leaving when their final decision for me is, "we've always done it this way." I chose to then stop, uh, the county attorney's office and I got the same answer. "We've always done it this way." That concerned me. So I did try to meet up with the city admin- or county administrator today and we kept missing each other. And the first one was my fault because I was down making, at Staples, making copies for you. So I missed his phone call and I apologize for that because he did try to get ahold of me. But with that, I will leave you with this. It, it's, we charge $25 a car to enter. We'll get 130 cars. We won't even break even. We hire a DJ. We hire the pipes and drums. They play two sets with the bagpipes. That's sentimental for all our British Car Club members. Um, and we will buy the trophies. And so thi- this is not something we make a lot of money. So if we have to do this permit and meet the requirements, it will be onerous for us. But that's plain and simple. Why I'm here is to make this plea to you. I would, I would like to hear back from you or the county administrator or someone as to what my direction should be. Because I'm not in the mood for running afoul of anybody, but I think it's fairly clear and I think it's an overreach.
Mr. Sadler?
Yes.
We've got your, um, uh, the documents you left for us and, uh, we'll, uh, talk to the county administrator and have someone reach back out to you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Andy Kason.
Evening. My name is Andy Kason. I live at 3205 Aaron Thistle. I'm a teacher at Jamestown High School and I am also the treasurer of the Williamsburg James City County Education Association. I am here to speak on the budget. Uh, the school board has recently done a compensation study similar to the ones that you, as a board, went through. I believe it was last year. Um, and they found some pretty alarming pay disparities with other regional, uh, school divisions. And if you want a reference to that, um, it's the, I believe it's the December 10th school board meeting. The PowerPoint, PowerPoint presentation is on board docs right now if you would like to see the numbers. But teachers are on average, um, forty, uh, excuse me, uh, 4.6% below the 50th percentile for the region in terms of pay. And that's of course, if you look at the entire pay scale and break it down, a 20-year teacher teaching at James City County Public Schools is making 8% less than what they would at other schools. Education support staff, bus drivers, custodians, speech language pathologists, they are at an even larger, they have an even larger pay gap. That's 11% on average. The bottom third of education support staff employees are 20% or more below the regional average in terms of pay. All these numbers mean that we, we are not really focusing as a community on the people who make learning happen every single day. I sit, I'm lucky. I sit at graduation every year and I see them report on how many millions of dollars of scholarships are going away. And that, that can't happen without some of the most dedicated people that work every single day to get kids to school, to get them fed and to teach them, right? Uh, I have to point out that our new acting superintendent, Dr. Keever, he went on, um, he, he, he was a bus driver for a day or a bus assistant for the day. He went with a bus driver from 5:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And I would encourage you guys to take the same job. Follow a bus driver from 5:00 AM to 5:00 PM and see what kind of, uh, what kind of tribulations they have to go through and then also take a look at their pay scale. We need to fund the school budget. The school board is up against a lot of competition. And if we are not paying for the best teachers, the best educators, the best bus drivers, then your constituents will be angry with you. To put it more simply, um, and, and just looking at some of our past budgets, I, I, I would like to just point out that the share of county revenue, um, has gone up while the share that goes to schools has gotten smaller and smaller and smaller. Starting in 2021, 55 cents every dollar went to schools. 2022, 50 cents of every dollar. Fiscal year 23, 47. 24 is 46. Now the most recent budget, 43 cents of every dollar. And that's be- from your budget, the handy little graphic that you have at the beginning that shows how much of your tax dollars go. And, and I think, and I, and I see in the last couple of years, the windfall of, of increase of property values results in an increase in revenue for our local government. However, the share is not going to the schools. And I think to myself, well, part of my work and part of the work of my colleagues and the part of what makes this such an attractive place resulting in high property values is the work that we do in the schools. And I think, I don't like to look at schools as investment because I think it's a fundamental human right. But if you look at it as investment, you're not investing in the things that are making this community absolutely amazing. The county works because we do. And you can't, you can't survive much longer on such large pay discrepancy. So again, I, I plead, please fund the school budget as much as you can. Now is not the time to, you know, shortchange your public school systems with all the challenges that we're facing nowadays. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kason. Next speaker is Paul Scott.
Chair, members of the board, I'm Paul Scott. I am here to represent Child Development Resources. We're located at 150 Point Awards Road. I wanted to speak and thank you all for the consideration of our funding request for some programming, but also for the renovation of the 312 Waller Mill property, which I'm happy to report, we're about a quarter of the way through renovations. Interior framing's gone up. HVAC is being roughed in, plumbing as well. And we hope that electrical will start soon with an anticipated move-in date of February 2026. That will be the location where CDR will establish, uh, the first of its kind in the area of Family Resource Center, where we can really have a, a more impactful presence with the families here in the community and enhance the early childhood mental health programming that we offer in addition to our existing early childhood, uh, intervention services for infants and toddlers with developmental delays and disabilities. We also have services now, so that the community is aware, uh, for moms, which include services like lactation support and infant massage training. We have a fatherhood program and we also offer training and technical assistance to early childhood professionals across the state of Virginia. I wanted to keep my comments brief, but just to say thank you for considering our request. There is a, a parent here that'll speak shortly after me and I'm looking forward to hearing your comments. Thank you for your service and your consideration of our requests.
And if you would give us your name and address for the, please.
Yes, of course. Hi, I'm Sarah Tuie. I'm at 203 Elmwood Lane, Williamsburg. And, um, I'm here to tell my story of being with CDR. Um, I will keep it brief and I'm, was only able to, you know, see a, a portion of what they're able to do, but they really did, um, make a huge impact on my life. So to keep it brief, I am a, a mom of three preemie babies, um, two of which are identical twins, uh, that were born in 2020 in peak COVID, um, during a very challenging time. And even though I was, I've been a resident here in James City County since 1999, I actually had not heard of CDR until someone referred me to them when they noticed I was struggling. Coming home from the NICU, when you have a baby that has been bottle-fed or fed through a tube, um, for two months, it's really difficult to transition that into home life and breastfeeding and all of those things. So, um, the first day I walked into CDR after being referred there, uh, I just burst into tears, to be honest. And I don't know if that's because I felt I was in a safe place or I knew I was not going to be judged. I was there with other moms. And immediately that day, I was signed up for services, um, realizing that my daughter's prematurity made her eligible for the infant support. Again, during COVID 2020, when I had my twins, um, ended up being hospitalized for a long time and pretty isolated, um, before my children were born with COVID restrictions and was able to virtually join, uh, the breastfeeding support group with CDR, which was really just special to be able to connect with other moms while being so, so alone, um, and expressing those concerns. Beyond that, I did, um, participate in many of the classes that they offer. He mentioned infant massage. Did that, um, for, for both rounds. I called it twin-fint massage the second time around. And also the mothers and babies, um, class. It's a five-week course that's really designed around, um, helping mothers cope and preventing postpartum and just all the things that, you know, sometimes we don't feel like we're comfortable asking, but they're really good coping mechanisms of having a lot of anxiety of new babies at home. I wrote down my, my thoughts because I want to make sure I didn't leave anything out. But just truly, I mean, I, I've been with them for six years and I think when I found out I was pregnant with the twins, I think, uh, Kara from CDR was one of the first people I texted, like, "I need help." So, um, they've been like family to me. Um, it really was just a lifeline. And, um, I tell this story often because I don't think many people know these services are available. And I think the additional awareness for them will be just really great for the community.
Our next speaker is Chris Henderson.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. First want to wish you a Happy New Year. I was not able to make it to your January meeting where you were talking about the budget. But anyway, you were not far from my thoughts and prayers as you contemplate how we spend our money. Uh, we're coming up on a very important anniversary. And 2026 will be the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. And I have not heard of any plans yet from James City County as to how we intend to celebrate this important milestone. And I, I want to encourage the county and this body to go big. Let's do a big event that will bring national attention to Williamsburg and James City County. This is where it began. Uh, this place deserves it. The community will support you. So we just need to do it. And so I want to encourage you to think big. As you contemplate your budget, I, I do want to, I do have a question about whether or not the wage increases that were approved during the last budget cycle. If those increases have been successful in filling the vacancies and improving retention. So I'd like to hear from the county administrator, if, if he has numbers on that, as to the vacancies that we're currently holding and as to whether or not the additional income that was directed to those slots has been utilized. I think that's important to know. And as the schools look for more money, uh, it'll become even more important. I know it's not your job to improve specific line items for the school board, but you will still have to allocate money. And the funds for the schools have gone up every year, even though they have gone down as a percentage of our total budget. So I don't want people out there to think James City County is starving Williamsburg James City County schools. Quite the opposite. In fact, they have so much time and money, they're now contemplating changing the name of James Blair. And I think this board should go back and tell them that there'll be no money for name changes for schools. We simply don't have it. If they want that money, put it towards the teachers, not to a school that was just recently rebuilt. All right. Uh, I'd also like to get an update on the proposed municipal complex. It is the single most expensive project ever undertaken by James City County government. I think the public is due for a monthly update on that project so that we can see where we are with respect to design and where we are with respect to budget. And I think that this board would be well-served and our community would be well-served if we put this as a referendum on the November ballot. And let's see if the public and your voters support spending $150 million on a municipal complex. Let's see it. If you think it's there and you can get it, then let's do it. If not, then maybe we need to rethink the, the proposition. Also, I, I continue to have a problem with the way we handle public meetings. We meet at 5:00 PM. It is not a convenient time for people who work, for people who have families. It is convenient for staff. I agree with that. But you work for citizens and taxpayers. And they deserve the right and a seat at the table and you're not giving them a fair shot. So I would ask that you change your meeting time to start at a later time than 5:00 PM. It takes significant, a significant amount of time to get here at 5:00 PM, particularly crossing through the Jamestown intersection, which is at a level service D. It's a, it's failing. We need to do something about it. So as you contemplate your request from the state and VDOT, let's ask them to build the above-grade interchange at Route 5 and see if we can help alleviate that and then bridge 199 over Jamestown Road. That would help solve the problem because it is a, it is the bane of commuters going through that intersection during peak travel hours at 8:00 in the morning and 4:00 to 6:00 PM. So with that, I thank you.
Our next speaker is Richard Timberlake.
Evening, board supervisors. Thank you for hav- having me. My name is Rick Timberlake. I live at 4147 Whiffet Way in Colonial Heritage. Uh, I've lived in the Williamsburg James City County area since 1957. I graduated from James Blair High School and attended Thomas Nelson Community College. My reason for coming here tonight, th- this afternoon, is to protest a short-sighted proposal by the Williamsburg James City County School Board to rename James Blair Middle School. And you would say, "Oh, well, you should speak to the school board about that." Well, I will. I shall. But I'm here to protest this silly idea of you renaming James Blair High School that would cost we taxpayers over $120,000. That is an unnecessary expense at a time when taxes are too high and this county has many other important needs. James Blair immigrated to Jamestown Colony in 1685. He was an Anglican minister who fought hard for the improvements in the capital Jamestown and its residents. While the landing colony in Jamestown and the Deepwater Port in Yorktown, between there is a productive plantation in the middle, this region saw significant growth when he arrived. Blair chafed under tyranny and was instrumental in getting three royal governors removed, sent back to, uh, England. Combative and persistent, he raised money for a school of higher learning and rebuilt that school more than once. His efforts to broaden the range of academics and professionalize the faculty resulted in William and Mary being an institution of learning that should make this region proud. Naming a local school after a man who worked for religious independence and higher learning was a wise choice. Blair was part of the group that advocated to move the capital from Jamestown to Middle Plantation, which eventually became the city of Williamsburg. Blair sought to forge an education system for the colonists and the Indian tribes that was independent from the traditional English clerical education. You've heard all these things before, but they bear revisiting due to the improponent suggestion that the middle school named for him should be changed. It has been suggested that Blair supported slavery and therefore a symbol of racism. The totality of Blair's work in somehow reduced, is somehow reduced to hurting someone's feelings centuries after the ability to farm the land relied on manual labor rather than just riding up to the John Deere store on Route 60 and getting a tractor and a tiller. We've come a long way from the days of slavery, but our history is richer because of men like James Blair. Now, if you, you want to really know what it's like to be exploited, you want to know what it's like to be marginalized, you want to know what it's like, what it feels like to be, to chafe under the yoke of, uh, imperious community leaders. to know what it feels like to be, to chafe under the yoke of imperious community leaders and who don't care about how you feel, go ahead and take a look at the personal property rates in James City County. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Next speaker is Marco Sardi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Stevens. My name is Marco Sardi and I live at 4008 Governor's Square. I'm also a teacher at James Blair Middle School. I work at WJCC schools and I'm privileged to get to teach our wonderful middle school students orchestra as they learn the strings throughout the year. I also represent WJCEA, which has members at every work site in WJCC, from administrators to teachers, TAs, cafeteria workers, and I'm privileged to represent them as president. I wanted to talk to you tonight in support of our schools as the school budget season is now well underway in the hopes that you will show that James City County really desires what is best to have the best schools that we really want to have for our community, to build our students, and to make sure we have a thriving culture. I know that this year will be a huge ask from the school board, and I wanted to encourage you to fully fund that budget. And I want to talk about why that number might be so large this year, as I know others will tell you outside of this room. The compensation study that was conducted in December revealed that we are well behind our peers in our region. This study was conducted by a firm that you trust as you implemented their own changes when they proposed them to you, when you conducted your own study. The troubling news is that we've fallen behind in our ability to attract and retain competitive staffing over the last several years. When compared to 20,000 of our peers, we are paid well below median rates, not above average, but below even the median 50th percentile. The task our school board has and our acting superintendent, Dr. Kever, has for them is to figure out how we can bring our division back to having the premier status that we say all the time that we have when our numbers show that we don't have that status as of today. If you want premium employees who can give you premium service, you have to value them at a premium. And so then this ask will be from the school board to not contain that. We are not asking for premium. We are asking not even for the median. The plan the school board has put together with the administration is to get us the first step of three to that median. And that number is still quite large, but it is not the system shock that we would really need to implement this all in one year because we recognize while we would love to have that all at once, it is not feasible on the taxpayers and it is not a feasible request. So this compromise gets us to the 50th percentile over several years. It is the school board's job to tell the public what we need to have the best schools. The voters have chosen for them to speak on my behalf, so please listen when they ask for what we need to make those things happen. I must ask you to reflect upon what you want for our schools. As my representative, do you want students sitting three to a seat on a school bus, as we saw this year? Do you want a special needs student to be not one-on-one instruction with an aide, but one of 100 on a caseload, as we've seen this year? Do you want to have the best schools? If you do, you will need to value them at a premium. I don't know what that form will take, but I encourage you to reflect on what we value as a community. If we want to be a community that appeals only to one type of resident who doesn't have students in the school system, that is your prerogative. But if you want to attract a multi-generational growth of a community, you will have to value that at a rate of your choosing. So I leave you with those thoughts, and I encourage you to play the market, as every other school division around us does, and try to attract the best because I teach the best, and that's our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we have no more speaker cards. No consent calendar for this evening's meeting, and we move to public hearings. And I understand we do not have a planning commission representative available this evening for the meeting, which is inevitable given the weather. And we have AFD 240004, 12121 Ivy Hill Road, Mill Creek AFD Withdrawal. And we have SUP 240016, 12121 Ivy Hill Road, Hedera Solar Facility. And we will have a staff presentation combined to begin with. And Reberus will give the staff presentation, and afterwards we will then tackle these two in order after one single presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ms. Esther Recaman of Hexagon Energy has applied for an SUP to permit a 3-megawatt solar facility proposed to be located at 101 and 121 Ivy Hill Road. The subject properties are Zoned A1, General Agricultural, Designated Rural Lands on the 2045 Comprehensive Plan, and are located outside of the primary service area. The properties are currently included in the Mill Creek AFD, and the project area must be withdrawn from the AFD to allow for the operation of a specially permitted use. As such, the applicant has also submitted an application to withdraw 60.6 acres of the properties from the AFD, leaving the remaining 40.46 acres enrolled in the AFD program. Withdrawal requests outside of the renewal period are considered per the criteria listed in the Board of Supervisors policy governing the withdrawal of properties from AFDs. Staff finds that this proposal is not caused by unforeseen changes in circumstances and that the request would not serve a public purpose. As the request does not meet all of the criteria required by the board's withdrawal policy, staff cannot support this AFD withdrawal request. At its October 17 meeting, the AFD Advisory Committee voted unanimously to recommend denial of this, this application to the Planning Commission and the board. The SUP request proposes the operation of a 3-megawatt solar facility to be developed on approximately, approximately 47.5 acres of the 101.36 acres of property. The site will be accessed via Richmond Road with internal service roads providing access to BMPs and other site features. The site has a long history of commercial timbering, including clearing as recently as 2022. The project is intended to operate for 40 years. At the end of that term, the owner will cease operation of the facility and execute a final decommissioning plan. The 2045 Comprehensive Land Use Map designates the property as a rural lands. While not a typical primary use, staff finds that this use could be appropriate in rural lands as solar farms in general are low-intensity uses after the initial construction phase has completed. This use is designed to be temporary in nature and intended to return to agricultural or forestal use at the end of the lease term and decommissioning measures. This recommendation is consistent with staff's comprehensive plan recommendation for nearby, recently permitted solar facilities. On December 10, 2024, the Board of Supervisors adopted a solar facilities policy to address application requirements, siting, and performance standards for solar facility development applications in the county. This application was filed well before the policy's adoption. However, the applicant did work with staff throughout the application process to address potential conflicts with that policy should it be passed during its consideration. Staff finds this application to be generally consistent with that policy. In addition to buffering and landscape requirements imposed on the binding master plan, staff has proposed conditions to mitigate impacts from this proposal. Those are listed in Attachment Number 1. At its January meeting, the Planning Commission voted 6-1 to recommend approval of both the AFD withdrawal and the solar project SUP request. Overall, staff finds this proposal to be compatible with surrounding development and generally consistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve this application, subject to the proposed conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time, and a team with the applicant is available as well. Thank you.
Okay. Questions for staff?
Yeah, I've got, so the AFD, staff saying not to. But on the solar facility, staff saying okay to.
Staff has to evaluate the policy, the applications per the policies. So the criteria is discrete in the board's policy regarding withdrawal of solar facilities. So staff is very limited in their discretion. If it doesn't meet all four, because that's exactly how the policy lists it, we cannot support it. And then on the flip side, for the SUP application, the policy doesn't have that discrete guidance. It's more of, is this generally consistent? So then staff is able to look at it at a line-by-line basis and kind of go by each criteria. So yes, they, our recommendations seem to differ, but our discretion is very limited unlike you all.
Even with the, the fact that the board has put in place that we don't want to clear trees in order to put solar facilities in there, was that a consideration during your recommendation or?
Yes. So I believe what you're referencing, just for clarification, is Policy Criteria Number 11 in the adopted policy, which states solar facilities should avoid the use of forested land. This is the first case to come before the board since that policy was passed. And so if there is further guidance as to the restrictiveness of that condition, that is something staff would love to have for future applications. As of right now, staff was able to take a site visit and look through historical GIS and satellite imagery to determine that there are several large cleared swathes on-site and that the vegetation that is there is lots of understory, like scrub and bramble, and then young, like seedling sort of growth. And so when you're comparing a traditionally virgin forested area versus that, that's how staff kind of determined that. And we put in our staff report to say this is why staff is finding it generally consistent.
Okay, and the, let's see, where did I write it down? The clearing that took place in 2022, so two, three years at most since it was cleared, I wrote out on the site, know the site, and there's a portion that's younger trees, look like they're anywhere from seven, eight years old, but there's a section as well that is probably half of it that's in mature trees. So there's a section up front that's been cleared. And it looks like it was cleared before 2022. I know a little bit about growth of trees. And, and so the whole site doesn't appear to have been cleared in 2022 because the trees would maybe be up to here. And there's a lot of large trees on the site as you ride around the site and all, you know, where you can get from Ivy Hill and, and on 60. So, all right, that's maybe the applicant can clarify that when they come forward and talk to us, and I'll give them a chance to be able to do that. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Staff? Okay, I had, I had one, when we go back to the request, the withdrawal policy, because I believe that John and I were the two that were on the board when we instituted that policy. And that policy was a direct result of properties being taken out of AFDs for pretty intensive residential development. And so I, I find it sort of interesting because when I read what staff says, the first one says the request is caused by a change in circumstances that could not have been anticipated at the time of the, the application was made for inclusion in the district. Historically, you say the change in circumstances is interpreted to be the death of the property owner. And it really doesn't expand much about that. And I, I don't recall us having that particular discussion about what would fit or what wouldn't. So it seems to me that's probably an interpretation that staff has made over the years. What's more important to me is the second part, which says that the request would serve a public purpose as opposed to a proprietary interest of the landowner. And that was very clearly what we had in mind, which was, you know, dealing specifically at that time with residential development. The interpretation, which is put down by staff, seems to be that public facilities, such as a school or a fire station, I can understand that being a school or a fire station. I can also see where, that if this was a piece of property that was taken out for school and we bought it and wanted to do something with it, that the landowner is going to benefit by having sold it to us or whatever. And I don't really see a whole lot of difference between that and someone who wants to put a solar facility, which I can argue is part of our energy program statewide, that would be providing a public benefit. And it, yes, it will provide some revenue to the, to the owner, but probably not nearly to the extent that had he sold it for condos. So I'm, I think, you know, I, I look at this and I, I think that the more important of the two is the second one, which is the, that we're looking for, public versus a proprietary interest. And that, I find that this seems to be fit more in that category than other things that we were looking at when we developed the process.
I'd certainly concur with what you have to say, Mr. Strashtown, on that.
Would that not count for anything as far as if, if they wanted to develop the piece of land and sell the lots, then that would be a benefit for the community, especially if they sold them as, as low-income housing? You know, then it would be...
That, in my mind, that would be, if, if, if there is a, ostensibly a public purpose, and a public purpose could be affordable housing or low-income housing. If the board decided that that was something that was a public interest, a public benefit, then yes, we could do that. The question then becomes, how much of it is, is just for the benefit, the financial benefit of the, of the landowner versus the, the public? Because if you're, if you're developing housing, the landowner is going to get a lot more money out of it than they are out of putting solar panels or, or, for that matter, what they're currently doing, timbering.
It would depend on the house and the market, of course. What if it was a, oh, what are the centers called that, that everybody's putting up right now?
Data centers.
Data centers. What if it, what if that site was for a data center and that's serving the same public use as...
I think we'd have a very good debate about the, the public benefit of a data center.
I don't know.
I think we'd have a wide, wide, because personally, I wouldn't, I wouldn't see that that necessarily would, would fit a public benefit. It would, that would definitely be, in my mind, like high-end housing. It'd be a specific benefit to a specific part of the economy or individuals.
I just, I just don't see how you split those hairs. So...
Any further questions or comments for staff on this? I guess, and this is questions or comments for staff for either the AFD withdrawal or the SUP?
I've got one more.
Yeah.
How long, do we know how long the person's owned this property? Is it, is it a new purchase or is it a family who's been here a long time or?
I will let the applicant give exact years, but several generations of ownership.
Okay.
Yes.
Makes sense. Okay.
Let me ask, I think I had one other question, but let me get to the right thing here. The only thing I did note while we were up here is that we have 101 and 121 Ivy Hill Road. And that's not what was on our printed agenda. It was 120 and 121, so there was a disconnect. And it turns out that the map here is correct. It is 101 and 121 Ivy Hill Road are the proper addresses. We've confirmed that we used these addresses in advertising the public hearing, so it's correct. So we've confirmed that we used these addresses in advertising the public hearing, so it's correct. And that we will uh, make sure that the uh, resolution reflect the correct addresses. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Right. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing for AFD 24, uh, 0004. It's 101 and 121 Ivy Hill Road, Mill Creek AFD withdrawal. So do we have any um, open the public hearing? Do we have any speaker cards? Okay, Mr. Esther Reckelman, the applicant. Thank you.
Can everybody hear me? Good evening, Chairman Eisenhower, members of the board. My name is Esther Reckelman. I'm a senior project developer with Hexagon Energy and the lead developer on the Hadera Solar Project. I want to thank the members of the board, as well as the James City County Planning Staff, for being here this evening on an especially damp evening. I had a quite a trek from Charlottesville today. I also wanted to extend a special thank you to Mrs. Suoff for her collaboration on this project and for presenting a thorough staff report. I'm excited to share with you this unique opportunity. For a brief overview of what we'll be discussing, the three megawatt Hadera Solar Project is sized at about 16.5 acres of fence line within a larger 101 acre parcel. The project will benefit the county by generating increased county revenue of over $500,000 through both taxes and/or revenue shared during the lifetime of the project. And it will protect the parcel from more, from more permanent development uses. The energy generated by this facility will be consumed by the community here, right where it is generated, and has the ability to power up to 600 homes. The project is designed to protect and improve the environment, complement the area, and be hidden from view. Ultimately, we are here seeking the approval for the special use permit and withdrawal from the Mill Creek Agricultural and Forestal District. And that is just an aerial um, visualization of what the project will look like. We're looking eastbound on Richmond Road. For a brief overview of our company, Hexagon Energy is, was founded and is headquartered in Charlottesville, Virginia. Hexagon has extensive experience developing small projects like these in the Commonwealth and in the Tidewater area specifically. We actually developed the Racefield Solar Project right here in the county that I believe is set to begin construction soon. It took a great number of people, both within Hexagon as well as outside consultants, to bring together the final product you see in front of you today, and I'm proud to be presenting this project. For a bit of background on the landowners, uh, this property has been in the hands of the Lightman and Silverman families for a few generations now, since about the 1960s. The land has historically been used for timbering and silviculture for at least as long as the current family has owned it. The last clearing did occur in 2022, and Hexagon connected with the landowners in 2023 when they expressed interest in finding a more productive use for their land. We have since worked very closely with them throughout the entire development process. We are proposing a three megawatt project on the site. The project site encompasses 47.5 acres, as Mrs. Suoff mentioned, out of the 101 acre parcel. Out of those 47.5 acres, less than 30 acres will need to be cleared and only 16.5 will actually be under panel within the fence line that you see on the screen. The rest of the special use permit area is going to include stormwater basins, open fields, internal roads, and protected viewshed buffers and wetlands. The site is currently screened by existing vegetation on all sides, including along Richmond Road. And this mature vegetation will be preserved and supplemented where needed for the lifetime of the project. The facility will not generate any offsite noise and there will be virtually no traffic generated during the 30 to 40 year life cycle outside of the first few months of construction, during which delivery and traffic schedules will be controlled. It's important to note that the project will not draw on county resources, such as roads, water and sewer, schools, and the facility will be required to be decommissioned at the end of its lifetime. Lastly, this project will directly benefit citizens who want to partake in the energy transition but don't have the option to put solar on their roofs, whether they're renters or other reasons. It will connect to the Dominion distribution lines that run through the property and connect back to the Toano Substation on Chickahominy Road. We intend to submit this project for eligibility into Dominion's Shared Solar Program. And if this project is selected, then 30 to 50% of its capacity will be awarded to low income residents in the county who receive the largest discount on their electricity through this program. This state mandated program benefits community members that are most affected by high energy prices and energy generated at this voltage will remain in the community to be consumed. I'd like to briefly address the chosen access road for this project. The access point, which is marked in bright red on the master plan, is located at the northeast corner of Richmond Road. This location was selected after incorporating staff feedback. Initially, we proposed an entrance on Ivy Hill Road, which we thought was preferable for viewshed and traffic. However, staff did recommend using a principal arterial road for ingress and egress, so we revised our design accordingly. We included the original Ivy Hill Road entrance as an appendix for consideration. I mention it mostly to highlight our ongoing collaboration with staff whose input has been invaluable in the design of this project. Traffic impact and VDOT site distance analysis were conducted for the Richmond Road entrance, confirming it has ample site distance for a low volume commercial entrance. As for haul routes to the access, there are two options, both of which include exiting I-64 closer to New Kent and then taking Richmond Road eastbound towards the site. These options avoid exiting I-64 at Anderson's Corner and having to take Richmond Road westbound and then making a U-turn to enter the site. Improving environmental conditions is a core part of Hexagon's mission. As outlined in condition number 14 of staff's proposed conditions, we will use Virginia native and naturalized grasses, along with pollinator friendly species, as ground cover beneath the panels. This intentional ground cover choice will reduce soil erosion, increase soil organic matter, support pollinators, and enhance crop pollination for nearby farms. This will also improve onsite water management, reduce maintenance, and build healthy topsoil. Our project includes significant setbacks from field delineated wetlands with 100 foot buffers around streams and resource protection areas. Aerial imagery does show that past timber clearing has impacted these vital resources, and we believe our project will aid in their restoration by allowing wetlands and RPAs to rest and recover. We've conducted thorough endangered species searches and are committed to meeting James City County's robust stormwater erosion and sediment control requirements with guidance from our consultants at Kimley Horn. Our use of single axis tracking technology instead of fixed tilt panel systems creates more space between the panels, allowing for greater water absorption beneath them, while deeper roots of native grasses further enhance that water retention. Regarding land use, the site is a monoculture pine plantation, not old growth hardwood, and it is cleared cyclically, to answer your question. Most recently, it was a partial clearing in 2022, but as far as I understand, the landowners do come in and partially or wholly clear the area. If you look at aerial imagery, there are moments where it was totally cleared. I think it mostly depends on timber prices at the time. Um, and it is then sprayed with herbicides to encourage growth of pines and stave off competitor species. Um, if this project were not developed, the land would likely continue to be cleared. Our project replaces traditional energy sources, resulting in emission reductions that far outweigh the environmental impact of the 30 acres of trees set to be cleared on site due to the project, which would be cleared regardless, given its operation as a timber plantation. So what you see on the screen in front of you is a a map of our fence line overlaid onto a map of the USDA prime agricultural soils. They are in both dull and bright yellow, but specifically in bright yellow is the area where our project interferes with those prime agricultural soils. So although 9.9 acres of USDA designated prime soils will be impacted, soil testing was done by a soil and landscaping specialist and showed that these soils do lack the necessary organic matter and nutrients for optimal agricultural growth, likely due to past timber management. You can see on the map that we did not intentionally place our panels on these prime agricultural soils, but rather that these soils are very disjointed throughout the property. I think a great example is the fact that Hill Lane, the private driveway closer to the southern end of the property, does bisect one of these large swaths of prime agricultural soil. This site would be very difficult to farm, given its wetlands. The landowners have no plans to farm it, and we instead chose to focus our design on avoiding areas of steep slopes and wetlands, balancing that with protecting the viewshed of nearby neighbors. And speaking of neighbors, Hexagon has actively engaged with the community throughout the entire development process, reaching out to nearby property owners along Hill Lane, Ivy Hill Road, and Richmond Road. As Mrs. Suoff, um, excuse me, we have made several attempts to reach out to the neighbor who lives closest to the project. Mrs. Suoff did not point this out in her presentation, but um, there is one neighbor who is within 400 feet. I understand that the policy currently states that um, the, all residents have to be more than 400 feet away from the fence line of the project. There is only one neighbor who is within those 400 feet. They're about 250 feet away. Um, we've made several attempts to reach out to that neighbor, which included several letters, knocking on their door, leaving a note at the door, none of which that landowner has responded to. Um, and so given this lack of response, we have come to the conclusion that this individual does not have major concerns about this project. But we have included all of our outreach efforts in the appendix. Um, our final outreach effort was via certified mail, which means that there needed to be a signature of receipt. So we do understand that this landowner has received our outreach efforts. We also reached out to all other adjacent neighbors that live along Hill Lane via letters. We met with many of these folks in person or over the phone, addressing some concerns about viewshed impact. And we can confidently say that viewshed uh, for neighbors on Richmond Road, Ivy Hill Road, and Hill Lane will not be impacted and will be protected throughout the project's life. Um, some neighbors expressed support, noting this project is preferable to new housing developments. We also hosted a community meeting in July, attended by about 10 to 15 individuals, who asked very thoughtful questions and no negative comments were raised then. As you know, running concurrent with the special use permit approval will have to be an approved withdrawal from the Mill Creek Agricultural and Forestal District. As staff mentioned, we do meet the third and fourth criteria outside of the withdrawal window, so I won't spend time elaborating on those pieces. Criteria A relates to a change in circumstance that could not have been anticipated at the time the application was made for previous inclusion in the district. When the property automatically re-enrolled into the AFD in 2022, the landowners were unaware of the opportunity to partner with Hexagon on this project. While we understand the necessity for the AFD withdrawal policy, this project does operate operate on a strict grid interconnection timeline, governed by state and Dominion energy regulations. We expect to receive our interconnection agreement by the middle of this year and need to make a decision on whether we're moving forward within a short window. If we do not act on this interconnection position in that window, then the opportunity for this project is lost. Therefore, we must pursue the special use permit and AFD withdrawal now, rather than waiting until the 2026 withdrawal window. We are requesting the removal of only 60.6 acres from the AFD, leaving ample acreage to meet minimum requirements, with the remaining 40 acres staying in the AFD and more that can later be re-enrolled back into the AFD after we receive site plan approval. Criteria B says the request should serve a public purpose. Community solar projects like this one, when well-sighted, can be a valuable public asset. This project will generate over $500,000 for James City County without drawing on local services, helping to reduce the citizen tax burden. It will also provide long-term affordable energy to local Dominion customers and has the potential to create significant cost reductions for low income customers through inclusion in the Dominion Shared Solar Program. While the AFD program offers tax benefits, it's still challenging for landowners to maintain the property due to volatile timber prices and limited timber harvests. Continuing forestry practices would involve more clearing of biologically sensitive areas like wetlands and resource protection areas. Our project will help restore the soil with native ground cover, protect these vital areas, and still allow a large portion of the property to remain within the AFD. This slide contains a lot of the information that is detailed in the staff report packet and project narrative. We fully support the staff and planning commission's recommendation for special use permit approval and believe the project aligns with the 2045 comprehensive plan. Our setback buffers meet A1 district standards, including our 100 foot vegetative buffer off of Richmond Road as per the latest zoning amendment. The staff report finds the project generally compatible with the area's character and rural development standards. The comprehensive plan supports solar projects outside of the PSA, highlights our environmental benefits, and encourages land uses that are compatible with rural surroundings. We also do agree to the 26 conditions outlined by staff. Although we submit submitted our application way before the new solar facilities policy was adopted, we tried to design the project to generally conform to it as much as possible. As noted in the staff report, we are largely consistent with the policy, though there are a few areas of nonconformance. And I'm happy to discuss these points and explain why these design choices were made after the general presentation. In recent years, solar development has been under intense scrutiny from a local and state level. The list here indicates the different agencies, reviews, and studies that are required before construction can even begin. I won't bore you with listing out each of these approvals, but it certainly highlights the level of detail and requirements that we must meet. Specifically for stormwater management, which I, which I know is one of the top priorities of the county, we've had several iterations of our design, go through exchanges with county Stormwater and Resource Protection Division to make sure we are confident in the placement of our panels and stormwater basin design can meet the standards of the state and the county. Construction timeline is estimated to take approximately six months. Once operational, this project will be a quiet and invisible neighbor. Unlike more intensive types of development, such as residential housing, solar development can be easily removed. Decommissioning bonds are included upfront and will be updated throughout the life of the project to um, show any ongoing changes to cost in decommissioning. We believe the project provides many benefits to James City County. Solar electricity generation is a safe technology. These panels are located on houses, schools, hospitals, and buildings all across the country. The project will generate revenue for James City County without drawing on local county resources like roads, water and sewer, and schools. The project aligns with James City County's long-term goals and comprehensive plan, protects viewshed, and is low impact to the community. It's an opportunity for the landowner to protect the land from other development uses for decades. The electricity will serve the local community and still allows an ample amount of land to remain within the AFD. Planning staff included 26 conditions that we have agreed to. The planning commission voted to recommend approval of this project in January. We've been working with staff since July of 2024, and many adjustments, either voluntary or recommended, have been added to this project. We will continue to work collaboratively with the county on this project, so we respectfully request the approval of the AFD withdrawal and the special use permit approval. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for?
I I do want to say that we have met and we met at the site and we have, we met another time and I believe we talked on the telephone as well with Mr. Foster present as well. So I do want to acknowledge that, so thank you.
I also had an opportunity to talk to the applicant early in the process as they evaluated the site.
As did I. I would um, ask just one, one, one real quick question. The um, of the, of the area in those two areas where the panels are?
Let me um, scroll back so we can take a look.
Or, yeah, right, right there, that's perfect, okay. Of the, of those areas right there, where you, where you're going to have to do uh, uh, you know, th- those two areas, how many acres are those, where the actual panels are total?
Sure, so the actual panels are, um, it's about seven and a half acres on the west side. That western um, array is about seven and a half acres and it's about nine acres in the eastern array. Um, so that's 16.5 acres total of just fence line. To account for the other 30 acres, the total 30 acres of clearing, so that's another 13.5 acres of clearing that we'll need to do, that includes, and it's a little hard to see on this screen, but it is in the master plan if you happen to have a physical copy. There are stormwater retention ponds, so there's one in the northwest corner. There's one sort of right southwest of the large wetland down the middle, and there's one directly east of the large wetland in the middle. We're going to have to clear those areas as well. Similarly, there are drainage ditches that lead to those um, uh, stormwater retention ponds. So we're going to have to clear those areas of well, as well of trees and then some internal roads. And so all in all, we estimate approximately 30 acres will actually need to be cleared.
Hey, can you give me an estimate of how many of those 30 acres have what I would call mature trees that would be eligible for timbering as opposed to scrub?
Sure, I would say if you're, if you're looking at from Hill Lane right now, um, you could tell just looking in that direction of the site that a good portion of the area is sort of understory and not really mature. Um, in a conservative estimate, I would like to say 15 acres, so I wouldn't be giving you wrong information. Uh, but I think that would be something that I would have to go back and, you know, double check. What is mature, what is it?
Approximately half of your clearing might be, might be mature trees.
Yeah.
And it would, and not all of it would necessarily be areas where it was the panels. It would maybe related with stormwater.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, okay, that answers the question for me. I, I guess what we uh, we, we actually are trying to get through both of these and I think what we will do is I will open the public hearing on the second one. will do is I will open the public hearing on the second one, so we can have people speak, and then I'll close both public hearings, and we'll come back and take our votes individually on the AFD withdrawal first and then the SUP, if that's acceptable to the board. Okay? So, no further questions?
That's all for me. Thank you.
Okay. I will open the public hearing for SUP 240016, 101121 Ivy Hill Road Solar Facility. And do we have any speaker cards? Okay. I think we have. Ms. Rinkelman, you don't need to speak again. Okay? Okay. And I had I had two of your staff folks, I believe, Ahmed Khalil and Megan Heckle, if you have anything to add.
Yes, yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairperson, members of the board. My name is Ahmed Khalil. I'm with the law firm of Kaufman &amp; Knoll's, 4801 Corhous Street, Suite 300, Williamsburg 23188. I'm here representing Ms. Ellen Lightman, one of the owners of the property that is discussed today. Ms. Lightman is regrettably unable to attend today's hearing, but wanted to pass along a message to the board. Hello, my name is Ellen Lightman. I'm one of the primary owners of the property being discussed today for a solar project. For a little background on myself, when my grandparents and parents first moved to the United States from Germany, they strived to own their property in the United States. Eventually, my father's family settled down in Newport News, and in the 1950s, he bought this property on Richmond Road and Ivy Hill Road alongside a few business partners whose children are now part owners of the property as well. While I have since moved out of state, continuing to hold familial ownership of this property is a way that we carry on my father's legacy. My family and the Silverman family have been actively working with Hexagon Energy for over a year now. We decided to engage with Hexagon because they are Virginia-based company and their values aligned with our vision and our goals for the land. We would like to be good neighbors and good stewards of the property. My father was very fond of this property, and I remember visiting it as a child. It is important for my family and the Silverman family that we maintain ownership of the property for future generations. My family has seen a significant increase in interest in our property over the last few years. We have received numerous letters from developers, both solar and residential, as well as other landowners, all whom find James City County both attractive for development and growth. When we were first approached by solar companies, we dismissed the letters. But then, as we discussed, what future use of the land would have to look like to preserve ownership, we decided to look into solar as an option. Hexagon Energy stood out to us, not only because they were a Virginia-based developer, but also because of the care they took to design the project in a way that does not impact surrounding neighbors and landowners. We knew they were the right people to work with if we were going to pursue this opportunity. Solar is a complementary and temporary land use that would not negatively impact the community or surrounding neighbors. After working with Hexagon for over a year, we can confidently say that they will carry out a project that will take into account the interests of the landowners, community, and land. We understand that in order to receive the special use permit, we would have to have part of the property removed from the Mill Creek Agricultural and Forestal District. When we first opted to enter into the AFD, it made sense for realization of benefits, given that the land was in timber use. When our AFD inclusion was renewed in 2022, we had not yet been in touch with Hexagon, and we believe that withdrawing only a portion of the land from the AFD to allow for solar development will be complementary to continued timber use on the remainder of the property, future ownership of the property, and will provide a public benefit of clean and reliable energy to the county. I respectfully ask that we be provided the necessary recommendation of withdrawal from the AFD and recommendation of SUP approval to explore this land use. Sincerely, the Lightman family.
Thank you. And the only other one we had was Megan Heckle from Kimball &amp; Home. That was just in case if you had questions on transportation or... Okay, I'll pass that. Yeah, we have several, we have several, two other speakers. The next speaker is Donald Hazelwood.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Donald Hazelwood. I reside at 8819 Hicks Island Road. My wife and I have come out tonight to support this project. I own property on Hill Lane, which is adjacent to this project, and I went to the community meeting early on and studied the site plan. I really liked the buffers and how hidden this thing will be. And we think it's a great use for the property, and family and friends out in the area all support it. So, I thank staff for supporting, and I hope you all will support it as well. So, we like it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our last one is Chris Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. Just a couple of observations and questions. It was not clear from the staff report as to whether or not Richmond Road at that particular location is a community character corridor. And if it is, are there additional buffer requirements in that area that would prevent sightlines into the property so that you can could see the solar array? So, that would be an important consideration for the board. Also, it was helpful to identify the AB soils on the property. And AB soils are important because they're the most highly valued and the most productive agricultural soils that we have in James City County. And one of the things that the county could do, and I know our staff is very bright and capable of identifying AB soils in the county and perhaps developing strategies that keep our AB soils in agricultural use or promote agricultural use. Because there may come a time where we need to rely on those soils to actually feed the population in the county. And to the extent that we can encourage local farmers or cattlemen or other types of folks who can actually work the land, I think that would be to all of our benefit. And I would just ask the staff if they could put their thinking caps on and perhaps think of ways that we could subsidize and encourage that type of use for the county. Because most of the old time, the old guard farmers are gone. And the folks that are currently farming are coming from Charles City County, David Hula and others, and from New Kent County. So, we kind of need to restock the platform, and there may be some opportunities out there if we put our collective heads together to do it. One of the things that concerns me about solar farms in general is runoff. Currently, the site is open and completely pervious, so water that's on the land can filtrate into the ground. So, I don't know. I haven't looked at the specifics of the stormwater management plan, but to encourage infiltration would be an important consideration as opposed to simply retention, allowing the settlement to settle out and then discharging into a waterway. We're not doing our aquifers any good by not reintroducing clean water back into our aquifers. As for the $500,000, wasn't a math major, but back of the envelope says that's about $10,000 to $15,000 a year of additional revenue. I don't view that as material consideration for the county. It's not one that I would check off as a great win. I would also wonder whether or not the project is relying upon subsidies from the federal government for green energy initiatives. President Trump has already said that he will be removing all of those, so if this project relies on federal subsidies of any form or fashion, they're probably not going to come through because the president has said they will not be available any longer. So, with that, I would actually prefer to see the site go for affordable housing because that's something that we actually need a lot more than solar panels. Thank you.
Okay. That's the last speaker card?
Yes, sir.
So, we'll close both public hearings and look to the board for any discussion or questions before we tackle the AFD withdrawal.
All right, I may go ahead and start. The AFD committee voted no on this. I wish we had a representative out here to give us what their conversation was. We read it, but, you know, actually what the conversation was during that meeting is far as, because that's the group we put in charge of this, and that's the group that we look for their judgment in order to keep this program moving forward. So, with them saying no, and then, of course, planning commission then turns around and says, yes, they're okay with taking that out, and they're an important group as well, guiding, you know, giving us some guidance on the direction that we go that, you know, it always... I think we're getting to the point where we're getting more and more solar farms in James City County, and it worries me that one day we're going to have too many solar farms in James City County. And what happens if something happens to one of them and they go belly up? You know, what happens then? And just like anything else, we can't predict what will happen to anything or any project if it goes belly up. You know, and you hear all those stuff that we'll clean it up, we'll take care of it, and I'm not saying that they won't, that I'm sure they're going to do everything in their power, the companies, to clean them up and take care of them. But it still gives me a pause as far as, you know, we're taking more and more land away, we're getting more and more development, we're getting, you know, and we're not creating any more land. And, you know, what is the best use for the property? And how can we help the owners of the property get the biggest and best use out of it? And I know that that site's got a lot of waterways, streams and all that go through it that feed into other streams and, in fact, go down to Mill Creek, which affects mine as well, as I get down further, Mill Creek. And that worries me as well, as far as, you know, we know what our creeks and streams and all are in James City County, not all of them. We're still studying Dieskin and Mill Creek and all that and coming up with the reports on those and what condition they're in. And we're just adding something else that we don't know a whole lot about. I mean, we hope it's a great thing. We hope it's a good product and, you know, and, you know, I don't think anybody's going to put a product in that's going to cause problems, but sometimes you put new things in, which solar is new, just like wind is new. And I think it's a component, you know, that we all use for, you know, an extra way. But, you know, today, tomorrow, and the next day, we're not going to be getting any power off that sun. And how much is subsidized on this? You know, I know part of the carrot is we're going to, you know, do this to people that can't afford power. Why aren't we doing that with Dominion right now? You know? Why aren't we doing more with that? If there's people that can't afford it, why are we putting new projects in order to? It's like putting a carrot in front of something. You know, why are we putting more product out there and saying, well, this is going to help these people that can't afford to pay this and that? Well, why don't we do what we've got existing and what we have in place? And so, it's just like when we get a development that comes in and says, well, I'm going to give you X amount for schools and I'm going to give you X. And you know, at the end of the day, it still costs, still costs every citizen. So, there's nothing free. So, it's, you know, the ones that we've been able to hide and put in certain places that, you know, cross river tracks is a good example. This one's right here on Richmond Road, and there's one just up the road from it on Richmond Road, and we're promised all the plannings and all that. I know the plans will go in there. I know it's not something that's not going to happen. I know that's going to happen. They're going to take care of it. Staff's going to make sure, but I know the company is good enough that they're going to put what they say in place. So, it's not something... But, you know, during storms, we lose that and all that. We may make seven, eight years to get the plants to grow up to the size they want. And then, you get an ice storm or something else, or a hurricane or tornado, and then you lose that, and you got to plant it again and wait seven, eight years. And meanwhile, you're riding down a main corridor, looking at solar panels. And just my opinion is I do not think solar panels are attractive at all. And so, that's just my two cents, and I'll leave it on for the rest of the board to continue the conversation. If there's any.
I kind of agree with Mr. Hippel on what he said. You know, everybody said when we did the comprehensive plan, we want to look at agriculture. We want to look at forested land. We want to look at green. That's why we moved here. And driving down when you're on Route 60, it's beautiful. I hate to see anything happen to it. And, you know, as far as income to James City County, 40 years is $12,000 a year, so I don't think that's anything we need to think about. I just hate to see things happen like this, and plus, we have the AFD rules, and I think people need to stick by them. We just redid them up two years ago. So, I don't like to see land come out of the AFD at all. I'm a little bothered about the house that lives 236 feet off of their fence. Supposed to be 400 feet. There's got to be a way to get this person, or it's still 400 feet is 400 feet. Whether they say they agree to that or not, what about the next owner that comes in that house? Also, the minimum sighting, this is less than a mile from the other solar farm that was approved last year. Supposed to be over a mile. Just... I'm just really worried about it. I don't like it. I drive up to Northern Virginia, and all I see in King William County is solar farms. It really is a blight on the land, so that's my personal opinion. Thank you.
So, one, I don't know. I have not supported all the solar farms in the past. The AFD withdrawal, we've approved some. I mean, so, we're not consistent on that.
I know.
So, you know, that argument, I'm not so sure about. But for me, the landowner is wanting to keep the land in the family. They don't want to do affordable house. This is what they would like to do. I, you know... This aside, solar farms are not going to address our energy needs moving forward. You know, I mean, I think that's great, that there's going to be some help here, but moving forward, I cannot tell you that I'm going to... I think that solar farms in James City County are going to answer the energy issues that we have, that frankly are being, our energy is being sucked away by data centers and the Commonwealth, and the solar business is not going to be enough to save us from that. So, that's a separate thing entirely. But I'll also take this opportunity, because we are debating a solar issue, that this is the place where this should be debated. It should not be debated in Richmond. It should be a local land use decision, even if it's one that comes out tonight that we may not have a unanimous vote on. It's still one that should be made, I believe, locally. So, for me, it's the fact that the landowner, they've already timbered the land, they've had a use other than farmland. It's not been something that they've been farming, and so, we're taking away a prime farm area. They've timbered it, and now they're wanting to do something else in order to be able to keep the land, so. be able to keep the land, so.
I've got a I'm I know these are always issues that there are going to be some disagreements about. But, you know, in in addressing some of these concerns, I do think that, as Mr. Eisenhower pointed out earlier, when we developed the original policy on AFD, we were not limiting specifically to a public facility that was going to be there, but to some public benefit. And I do think there is a public benefit here in terms of a couple of different things. One is the fact that the developer is committed to pursuing the opportunity for share power sharing through the Dominion program that would provide assistance for low-income residents to get a lower rate for their electricity. We can say that, you know, maybe they don't, they shouldn't be using as much power if they don't have the money for it. But everybody needs electrical power. And and if there's an opportunity for us to help with that, I think that's that's great. It's important to recognize that the concern that that Ms. Noel pointed to, which is a very valid one, that we want to make sure that there is the opportunity to enjoy that ride down Route 60. Well, that's something that this plan, I think, addresses very effectively. First of all, the the nature of the of the property is such that it will be pretty effectively screened from Route 60 just by the the topography of the land. But then the buffers will address that as well. And and it is, I think, a very useful way that the developer has has proposed to do this. I I think it's also important for us to remember that what we're talking about here is taking that land for 40 years and not having additional development on it as opposed to the AFD where in a year, they can apply for withdrawal of that of that land and use it for something else. Affordable housing is a wonderful thing that I've been working on with the board, board's endorsement and and the great work of our housing department and our community development folks to find the the right appropriate places. But if we feel this is an important piece of agricultural land, if we we're concerned about those agricultural soils, I would much rather have it protected for 40 years from active development that is going to transform it and mean that it can never be used for farming or timbering again. And hope that at some point that that soil will be restored to productivity, which as as we heard is not very, it's it's great, it's the right kind of soil, but it's just been depleted pretty significantly. So I think that recognizing that that the landowner wants to keep the property out of development has offered this proposal, which is a 40-year application of it of this solar farm, would mean that there wouldn't be the development of that property that moves it out of agriculture permanently, but rather allows it to get to be restored to agriculture if there is an opportunity to put that land in that purpose. But it's also going to make mean that we'll know that for the next 40 years, that land is going to be in this use as opposed to what may happen when they could withdraw in a year and develop it in order to be able to afford other things in in their lives. And I think that when we are considering this opportunity, you know, I I think when we went and visited the solar farm in Norwich, which is not a huge farm, it's not like the ones that we do see from the interstate or or if you go down to some of the South Side and southwestern Virginia counties where there are tens of thousands of acres being put into into solar farms. This is a small-scale project. And I think that we recognize that the the farm, the solar farm itself was pretty impressive in the sense that they have addressed things like, how do you make sure that there is good grass growing underneath? Or that there's a an opportunity to attract pollinators to to that property? And we know that the 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 panels adjusted themselves in ways that mean that if there is rain coming down, it's not going to come just in sheets on on the single piece of property. It's going to be spread across the the property. Where we had a problem with that piece of with that with that solar farm were really objections from a neighborhood that was being impacted. There's no neighborhood in this instance that's being impacted in that kind of a way. And so I think that this really is a is a very good use for this particular property and gives us the opportunity down the line to see that property remain in forest with buffering, maybe restored to agriculture at some point if that's possible. But really allows us to know that for the next 40 years, this is a use that we can stand by. And I agree entirely. This is not the solution to the problem of data centers, which is why we asked for study to be done on on us developing a policy on data centers as well. But we do know that there is going to be a huge draw on electric power in Virginia. And we have to look for opportunities to address that in some way or another. This is part of, maybe it's a small part, but it's part of that answer.
One one quick on that. The, yeah, the neighborhood, it it was behind the neighborhood, but this is in front of the Ivy Hill neighborhood. And that's still a neighborhood back there with quite a few houses. So and and that's a neighborhood.
But it's but it's not running the lot the lines through that neighborhood is is the point that I was making, that that caused some significant disruption for the neighborhood.
Right, when they upgraded the lines.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Just a couple of very brief comments from me. I I I wouldn't support this if I didn't believe that it would be hidden from view. I think that, as Mr. McGlynn says, the topography and the buffers will quite effectively take care of that. I think that I can't differentiate between clearing this property on a regular basis for timber and clearing a small portion of it for solar. And if it doesn't go into solar, it still keeps getting cleared. So we're not we're not developing long-term old stand trees. It's the owner's desire. I think you've got good good neighborhood support, and I think there's a public benefit for it. So those are my comments on it. At this point, we will close the public hearings for both of them. And I will look to the board for a motion on the first one, which is the AFD 240004101 and 121 Ivy Hill Road, Mill Creek AFD withdrawal.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the withdrawal.
You have a motion? Stevens, call the roll, please.
Ms. Noel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Oh.
Mr. Eisenhower.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Your second is the SUP 240016. It's 101121 Ivy Hill Road, Hadera Solar Facility. Look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Any motion to approve? Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Noel.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Oh.
Mr. McGlynn.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. We have no board considerations. We look for board request and directives.
I might as well start in this connecting in our our public hearing. You know, if, you know, if we're going to look at planting 10,000 trees in James City County, but we're going to take 60 acres out, I don't, I'm not going to support putting money into trees that we're going to cut down somewhere else. I just want to make that statement right now. And, you know, that I I agree with getting more trees and planting trees and all that. But we're taking trees out and putting trees in, and we're spending taxpayers' money to put trees in, and we're taking other trees out. It that doesn't make sense to me, so. And that's all I have on requesting directives. Thank you.
Kind of liked Mr. Henderson's idea that we put a vote for the do a referendum for the sports, I mean, not the sports center, the new government center. Is that something we can discuss or is this, do we just do something that nobody wants? I don't know. I'm just asking.
Ms. Noel.
We're too far.
Virginia is not a referendum state. That's not something to which you can put to referendum.
Thank you.
Too far in.
So just a couple of things. I I I wanted to check, I people make their public comment and then they go. And you don't get a chance to, I don't know that they sit in through the meeting and listen to the comments. I was wondering if some of the data that Mr. Kason gave regarding our lack of, you know, our that number going down had to do with the tax that used to come through us, but now goes directly to the school system. And that was part of the reason for the change because, you know, we we put 95 million-plus into the school system, and I believe that number's gone up. So I just wanted to check that number.
Ms. Larson, I didn't verify the number, but you're you're correct. In the five-year period, we did move the sales tax for education that used to come through our budget and showed a higher cents per dollar in case of what he shared. We send that directly to the school division now, so it does not pass through us. And so you're right, our contribution to the school division has increased every year significantly last year. We did fund their requests last year. And as we go through the budgeting process, which we've not received their request, we will work to do what we can to support their staff as well. But that'll be a discussion at a future meeting for for the board.
And you would you would think I'll agree with you. You would think with as many times as we talked about that, an educator, an educator would understand and know that better than a regular citizen, especially if they're involved in the school that much. So it, you know, it it brings questions there as well.
Well, it just worries me because I know that people sometimes watch. I want to make sure that that
Exactly.
the the full, the data point is made. I did briefly look at their compensation study, and I'm sure they will be bringing that forward. They're they do show quite their areas of, you know, where we pay 55, somebody's paying 58, that type of thing. Also, just a couple of comments regarding James Blair. One, it is in the city. So, you know, I don't I don't know how the cost would play out if, realizing that the funding does come from the city and the county, I understand that. But it is a a school board decision. It is not one made here. However, I do not want to be, it it would, it bothers me that it was hurting someone's feelings was said. And I've never been enslaved in my life, nor do I know of a relative that has. I I don't know. But I I don't think that we need to be flippant with anything that has to do with this. This is not a decision that is going to be made at this dais. It's going to be made by the school board. But I think we have to be empathetic for those that are coming forward, asking for that. Again, that decision will not be made here, but I don't I don't want that that to be the headline tomorrow. So for me. And I just want to thank staff. It was an excellent retreat last week where we got updates on the government center, which I believe we've gotten an update.
All the time.
Every month, right? Okay, yeah. We're we're getting updates from Mr. Reinheimer. And typically, you know, those come around 6:30. So we should all be tuned in by that point. But we've gotten updates on, I believe, every item that was brought up this evening. And so, but I just, I do want to thank staff for just an excellent retreat. And one of the things that was talked about was the compensation study and what a difference that has made here. And so I'm sure you will bring, you will talk more about that at budget time, but just an excellent job. So, thank you.
Just two quick things. One is that this past weekend, Old Town Medical and Dental Clinic held their Give Kids a Smile clinic. And I believe they had over 100 children signed up to get examinations and some treatments and schedules for follow-up visits through Old Town. So it's a really valuable service. I know a number of dentists and dental hygienists and and others have volunteered their time on on a Saturday to come out and work with the kids to make sure that kids who might otherwise not get a chance to see a dentist have the opportunity to to get their oral health in shape. So that's that's one. The other thing I wanted to mention is I wanted to make note of the passing of an important community leader, Edith Hurd, known by many as Cookie, longtime resident of the county, family has been here for generations. And Ms. Hurd passed away earlier, at the end of last week, I guess. And she was a very active advocate for the workers in Colonial Williamsburg and other locations in the hospitality industry in particular, working to make sure that they receive fair treatment and compensation. She was an active civil rights advocate. And very recently, she agreed to the purchase by the county of some property that her family owned, which will be available for us to expand to some degree, some additional opportunities for affordable housing. So Cookie is somebody that anybody who knew her couldn't come away without feeling a warm spot for her, whether she came to you to complain and make you feel like you were just not doing your job. But by the end of the whole discussion, as our, as a friend put it, by the time she came to the end of the meeting, she was calling you honey and babe and just saying, all's well. You know, you do your best and we'll we'll work with you. So the community will really miss Cookie Hurd. And I understand memorial service will be next Tuesday at 11 o'clock at Williamsburg Community Chapel.
John, thank you. That reminds me of Gary Docstater, vet for us for ever since he moved into James City County. Great vet, large animal vet, took care of all the large animals in town, unexpectedly passed away. And you couldn't ask for a better compassionate man as far as when you had a large animal. He helped us over at Colonial Williamsburg when I worked there when he first came into town. And if you, anybody in the horse community or any large animal community knew that they could call Gary at any time, and he would come over. And there were times he would stop by people's houses on the way home and check on an animal that he was taking care of and all that. And and just a good-hearted, decent individual. And there's really, we've we've lost a really good resident of James City County that that cared not only for his animals, but his passion for the animals is also was his passion for people as a whole. And he really enjoyed people. So we'll miss Gary very much. Thank you.
I wanted to echo John. Cookie was one of my constituents, and I heard from her on a regular basis. And John is absolutely right. She could chew you out and make you feel good at the same time. She will be sorely missed. I did want to remind everybody that when we first started this year, I mentioned that I thought it might be a good idea if we did individual town hall meetings in our own districts, and I'm going to lead the charge. I've got one set for the February 27th at the JCC Rec Center at 7:00 PM. It's going to be a fairly informal affair. I'm going to speak for very briefly on some major issues, schools contract, you know, the new county complex, the strategic plan update, the budget, some of the eastern state property that's under consideration for development, and a plea to our residents to put their names in for boards and commissions. So it's going to be a fairly low-key informal affair. I think it's the benefit is a question and answer opportunity for our citizens to have some direct dialogue. So I would encourage you all to try to schedule something on your own. I'm planning on trying to do this about once a quarter if I can. I know it's going to get complicated when we get into the budget season, but we'll we'll work our way through it. The only other thing I did want to follow up on on our public speakers, the gentleman from the Britishian Import Car Club, if you could find out a little more for us and get back to us as a board member. I'd like to make sure that we understand what the, I'm sure I'll have an opportunity to read through his missive, but but I would like to get a little feedback from staff on how how that works, what we can do to try to maybe make it a little easier.
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, we come to the reports of the county administrator.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report this evening. I appreciate your time at the retreat and all the time you've given us last Friday and Ms. Noel again today, but nothing.
but nothing further to report.
Could you, could you just say something about that grant that we received? The million dollar-
It hadn't officially come through in terms of having it. We do have notice of receiving, uh, just over, I think, 1.1 million CDBG grant, which our staff had proposed for, you know, continuation and improving the end of, I guess, Moses Lane, um, something we've talked about for a long time where homes were built at the end. It's a dirt port section of roadway. It has turned into quite the mess at the end of the road and this grant will solve that issue without using local dollars to do that, or at least not any significant local dollars. So I think it is a really good announcement for us. That will come before you for acceptance in the coming meetings, but the notice came out this past week. So yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yeah, well, because I noticed New Kent did this big hurrah on, on one that they received. And so I was like looking through and then I went, ours is almost nine times that. So I think that's really exciting. That's great.
It is, and it'll, it'll make lives a lot better for the folks in that particular area. A number of those houses were built by Habitat, uh, with, uh, with families that have occupied those homes. And, uh, at the very end of that street is the property that Ms. Hurd, uh, sold recently, at the, at the other end of the street down toward Government Road. Uh, and we have an opportunity, I think, in the coming, um, months and years to, uh, actually connect that whole area down onto, um, Route 143 and, uh, um, provide some other opportunities for us to partner with others for some affordable housing.
Hey, uh, may I have a motion to enter closed session for the following? Consideration of personnel matter, the appointment of individuals to county boards and their commissions pursuant to Section 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia, the Planning Commission.
I'm moved.
Mr. Stevens, call a roll.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're in closed session. In session, I need a motion to certify the closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to certify that we only spoke about those items we indicated we would speak about going into closed session.
You, Mr. Stevens, call a roll.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Um, I'd like to nominate Crystal, um, Haskins to, uh, serve on the Planning Commission. And the term, I apologize.
February 1st, 2025 and expires January 31st, 2029.
Thank you for that term.
Ready?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Hey, and, uh, I have me, I may have a motion to adjourn until 1:00 PM on Friday, the 25th, uh, for a business meeting.
Friday, the 25th?
I'm, yeah, it's, sorry. February 25th.
February 25th.
Fr- February 25th for a business meeting.
Okay.
Thank you for the catch.
Yes, I moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Stevens, call a roll.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned.
Yeah, we got Doug.
Now we got Doug, we thought you went home.
This is the guest speaker.
Oh, oh, I didn't know that, but I was going to email, never mind, forget we're on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We'd like to call to order the meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors. Roll call please, Mr. Powell.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. McGlinn? Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Ms. Knoll?
Here. Do you have no presentations tonight?
No, ma'am.
Do we have any speaker cards, sir?
No, ma'am.
Okay, consent calendar, tonight's consent calendar consists of the minutes, may, last meeting, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to adopt the consent calendar.
Mr. Powell?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Public hearings tonight? Under board considerations, um, setting a public hearing fiscal year 2026 utility rates. Mr. Powell, to give a staff presentation and introduce our consultant.
Thank you, just very briefly, um, you all know Mr. Burnham, uh, Vice President of Stantec. You know, we've been partnering with him for about 10 years now. Uh, he's going to make the bulk of the presentation tonight regarding the utility rates or the proposed utility rates for fiscal year '26. I'll make a couple of brief concluding remarks when he's done. Andy, take it away.
We can go through the presentation. I'm sorry? Can you hear me okay?
I thought you, I thought you were muted for a second, but you're good.
Okay, excellent. Get the presentation right size for everybody and we'll be, uh, off and running. So, um, good evening, Board of Directors. Uh, my name's Andy Burnham with Stantec and I'm happy to present to you the findings from the rate study that we've conducted with your staff that's in support of the discussion of utility rates for fiscal year '26 and beyond. So we do have a presentation today, um, that is very consistent with the presentation and discussion that we had two weeks ago at the board's retreat on this topic. So I'll, uh, move swiftly through the presentation and really spend the time focusing on changes since that meeting, if that's, um, acceptable to the board. So in terms of an agenda for the discussion, uh, really I just want to do a quick background recap of the prior rate study, uh, back in 2020 and some recent efforts in 2024 that set the stage for this analysis. Um, and then get right into what we found relative to the adequacy of the revenues generated by your current rates and some options to, um, structure future increases to meet the needs of the authority, um, through a combination of fixed and variable charge adjustments. Uh, then I did want to talk about facility fees, the upfront capital charges for new growth, uh, that allow them to pay for their fair share of unit capacity. And then at the conclusion, of course, allowing, um, ample time as the board's discretion for questions and discussion on, on what I have for you. So by way of background and summary of prior studies, the last comprehensive rate study, um, similar to this, was done based, um, basically about four or five years ago in fiscal year 2020. And as a result of that study, uh, the authority board had adopted, uh, rate adjustments, both in terms of the structure of rates that you have in place now for residential customers. That's where your inclining block rate structure came from, as well as modest increases to water rates, um, over the next four-year time period. So as you can see in the table here, the water bill had some modest adjustments to it, um, in fiscal years '22, '23, and '24. Uh, but the sewer bill, as you can see, remained flat.
Hey, Andy.
So no adjustments to the sewer charges. Yes, Doug?
Andy, I'm sorry to interrupt. Your slides are not processing, um, and I think the problem might be on our end. We see your title, we see your, your cover, your cover slide, but we haven't been able to cycle through them. I think we can do it, um, on our end, so let me, let me try to do that real quick.
Okay.
Okay, okay, I think we're ready, Andy. It looks like it's, um, it looks like it's loaded on our end.
Okay, do you want me to stop the screen share then, Doug?
Can you change the display settings?
Uh, let's see if I can do that.
Top left. The display settings up in the top left there, Andy. Right next to that one.
Yeah, I don't have a display settings.
We see you on show taskbar right now. Do you see display settings to the right of it?
No, I just, it just shifts over to audio, video, participants, chat, share. So I'm not seeing the same screen you are for a minute here, so.
Can we, can we cycle through the slides? All right. I think we're, it, it's just not quite, there we go, there we go. That looks better.
I could just go through it in this format and hopefully that would go through, okay.
Okay, all right, thanks, Andy.
So are you able to see the summary of historic rate increases on the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, okay. So as I was saying, um, with- Perfect, okay. So, as I was saying, with this particular slide, we're just trying to summarize the outcomes from the last comprehensive rate study that was conducted for the authority back in 2020. And from that study, there were two notable things that occurred. One was the implementation of the current inclining block rate structure that we have for residential customers. And the second was the establishment of a multi-year plan of increases for the water system to address the then-identified needs for that three-year time period. For the sewer system, no increases were identified in that 2020 rate study, so if you look at the table on the bottom of the chart, you'll see that the sewer bill remained flat over that entire time period. So, the total bill change that customers saw on average during that time period was about a dollar on the monthly bill or about 2%. However, as we moved through the rate plan and ultimately got to last year, the board may recall a discussion that we had about an interim revenue sufficiency study where we analyzed the current data and confirmed the board's current policies for financial sustainability in terms of reserve levels and long-term financial pillars, and I'll go into those in just a moment. And the reason we had that conversation was to take into account increases in operational costs associated with a significant amount of inflation that occurred as a result of the pandemic, and I'll go into some of the details on that. And so, as part of that evaluation, one of the things that we were very sensitive to was making sure that we did keep in mind as part of evaluating the adequacy of your rates, some of those key financial pillars that help ensure not just near-term but long-term affordability of service. And some of those were associated with making sure that we fund our recurring capital needs from rates and not necessarily funding those with debt, especially as the box on the right shows, the cost of debt had increased substantially on us going from about 2.5% to about 5% on annual interest rates for typical long-term debt. We also wanted to make sure that over time, we made the system more resilient and had enhanced fixed cost recovery from our fixed monthly charges to provide stability in the face of potential changes and demands that could occur over time. And we also wanted to make sure that we had adequate reserves in mind, that we were planning ahead and as much as we could to make sure that we could address any unforeseen circumstances and had resources available to make sure that we could account for those types of unplanned or unexpected pivots that we may have to make. And so, as a result of the '24 interim revenue sufficiency study, we updated the multi-year financial forecast based upon the increased level of cost as a result of the inflation that we were seeing. Presumed forecast of inflation at that time, that was more normal, and identified the forecast for water and sewer systems that would meet your then-current operating cost and capital cost. And that led us to the adoption of the increases and the bills that are shown in the fiscal year '25 column on this chart. So, in fiscal year '25, we had a total utility bill that went from about $46.71 for water and sewer service to $50.64. And that was an increase of just under $4 or about 8.4%. And the forecast, as we talked about this last year, was a very similar level of increase from '26, '27, '28, and '29. If you look at that dollar change on the bill, the bottom, it was about $4.26, or $64, $4, and then $3. And so, this is where we left the conversation last year with the understanding that in 2025, we would do a comprehensive look at not just the financial plans, but also the rate structure and how we capture that in our fixed and variable charges, as well as look at our facility fees for new growth and development. But this really is kind of where we left off the conversation on rates coming into this year. And so, what I wanted to do now is kind of shift the conversation to what we've observed and what we're looking at in this year's rate study and rate evaluation. And so, as I mentioned, the focal points for this study were really associated with addressing the questions of how much revenue do we need to meet our current and projected operating and capital costs and maintain adequate reserves? And how do we collect those revenue requirements in terms of adjustments to our fixed monthly charges as well as our usage rates based on metered water use? And also then encompassing facility fees, but I first want to talk about these first two questions of how much revenue is required to meet our needs and how do we collect it? So, one of the first things that we have to look at in establishing how much we need are operating costs, and this chart really depicts just a comparison of our current forecast of operating expenses for the water and sewer systems as compared to the forecast from last year. And the good news is, is that we're seeing some stabilization. When we looked at this last year and compared it back to the forecast from the '20 study, the rate of inflation had a significant gap between these two sets of columns, about a $2 to $3 million gap. So, we're seeing some stabilization in operating costs, but they're still at elevated levels. We've documented a number of areas within JCSA's operating expenses where key components have increased significantly since 2022, specifically chemical costs by 44%, electricity costs just 15% in one year, as well as personnel cost. And, you know, these trends in terms of the increases, we're not alone in terms of what we're seeing, both in terms of the sharp increase in that 2022 time period, but also some more stabilization on current costs. And you may recall these charts from prior conversations where we showed the cost of plastic pipe is the index on the left-hand side of the chart. And you can see in the recent time, it's actually been going down slightly, but it's nowhere near historical levels. On the right-hand side, you can see the cost for chemicals, and you can see this is more stabilizing as opposed to continuing to escalate a significant rate. And these are just a couple of indices that track some of the key commodity costs that are very relevant in big parts of utility operating budgets. As we flip to the capital side, we see very similar capital costs from the last study last year to this year. The water 10-year capital needs are almost identical, about $41 million over that time period, and the sewer needs have only increased by about $2 million. When we looked at this last year, it was almost $1 million per year for each system, more than what was forecast because of the increase in capital expenses. Many of those increases, you know, the prices are very consistent today, and I'll show you that, but we were seeing some just unprecedented increases in capital costs, whether it was for water plant bids or equipment bids, for vehicles, reductions in numbers of bidders that we wouldn't even receive any bids for lift station replacements. The level of increase in capital costs that we went through was pretty significant. But as evidenced by your CIP that we have for this study, as well as, again, some of those industry trends, we are seeing some stabilization on capital costs as well. Still some small increases on the commodity construction and the national or the new industrial building construction costs as measures. But again, they're not necessarily increasing at the same rate that they were the last time we had this conversation. And so, we factor in these operating costs and capital costs as well as certain key financial policies, as well as assumptions about growth rates and targets for ratios of income to debt, to the extent we have that, and forecast future inflation to then be able to evaluate, are the revenues from our current rates gonna be adequate to meet these operating and capital cost needs, given these key inputs and assumptions? And we make these projections over a multi-year time period, and it helps inform the establishment of these multi-year rate adjustment plans. And so, for the water system, what we've identified are adjustments for both the variable rates and the fixed rates that are different with the intention of trying to increase the level of fixed cost recovery that we achieve in our fixed rates. And so, you can see for the variable rates, a plan of adjustments of 6% for two years, followed by 3% for three years. That's the same as what we talked about last time when we were at the board retreat a couple of weeks ago. The fixed rate plan, however, is more modest. Instead of being $2 increases in '26 and '27, it's now $1.50 for '26 through '28. We've tried to spread that out as much as we could, based upon the discussion that we had at the retreat of trying to smooth out the overall bill impacts. And the adjustment or the results of this rate plan in terms of our financial picture, we do meet our minimum reserve requirement, and we talked about this at the board retreat. One of the things we want to do is make sure that in the long term, we have our revenues and expenditure streams matching, so the revenue that we're taking in match the expenses going out. But we also want to make sure we have adequate reserves, and so this plan will keep us above that minimum target based upon the forecast and the information we know today. It won't cause us to drop below it with that small and subtle adjustment on the timing of the phase in of the fixed increases. And obviously, as we go forward in time, the actual fund balances, you know, will change depending upon the timing of the expenditures of the capital improvements. But generally, based upon the needs that we've identified, we would expect the reserves to come down close to that target in '28, but we should be above it based upon what we know in this rate plan. We did a similar analysis for the sewer system, again, with certain key assumptions, very similar to water relative to reserve targets and debt ratios that we want to maintain to enhance and ensure our long-term financial health and sustainability. And when we put the operating cost and capital costs for the sewer system through with the assumptions, we similarly were able to develop an updated rate plan. And as you notice with the water system, we were running into some cash flow constraints in our reserves getting pretty tight in 2028. So, the water system needs higher adjustments in that '26 to '28 time period. The sewer system has slightly higher reserves to start with, so we tried to, again, based on discussion at the retreat, try to develop a plan of sewer rate increases that would allow us to maintain and meet our fund balance requirements, but combined with the water increases served to level out the impact to combined water and sewer customers. And so, what we were looking at last time for variable rate adjustments actually had a 4% increase in '26 and then 6% increases thereafter. And you can see we've deferred those adjustments as part of trying to result in more even and level increases. Similarly, on the fixed fee adjustments, as compared to the retreat, we're going up by $1.50 in '26 through '2030 as opposed to going up by $3 in 2026 and then $1.20 in '27 and 6%. Again, trying to levelize the overall bill impacts, which I'll show you here momentarily. What this does for the sewer system is it does allow us to meet our reserve targets, and you can see for sewer, the pinch point is coming down to 2030. That's where we needed to make sure that we get our revenue versus expenditure streams pretty right-sized so that for both systems, you noticed, once we get to the end of these rate plans, we're really just looking at indexing adjustments at that point, based upon what we know today, to really keep pace with inflation. But this is kind of the inflection point for the sewer system is 2030, and so that was how we considered some modest adjustments to the overall rate plan to really balance out the annual customer impacts for combined water and sewer customers. And so, when we update the forecast of that bill impact for that typical user, for our residents that use about 5,000 gallons per month, you can see that in '25, our increase was at $3.94, and then now in '26 through '2030, you can see it's almost about $4.50. It's a small variance there from year to year, but based on the discussion from our retreat, that's about as level as we could get it while still meeting our financial targets as well as our operating capital expenditure cash flows, while trying to provide some stability and predictability to customers in terms of what that average annual bill impact is gonna be. When we met at the retreat, the rate plan actually had about a $6.47 increase for fiscal '26, and so that's obviously now about $2 less. In 2027, it was about $5.41, so now it's about a dollar less, but the future years have to be a little bit higher. They were about $3, and now they're again about $4.50. So, that's a result of the smoothing dynamic to try to make this more moderate and predictable and stable for our customers. And I think, you know, to kind of conclude things on the revenue sufficiency and the rate design piece, you know, I want to add some context in terms of the value of water. So, if you were to take and compare, you know, the cost of filling a pool with JCSA water, it would cost you about $85 to fill a 10,000-gallon swimming pool. Many other things that we buy at the grocery store or out on our trips to town relative to, say, coffee from Starbucks, if you were to actually fill a 10,000-gallon pool with bottled water that we will buy from Zephyr Hill, for Zephyr Hills, in a 32-pack from the grocery store, actually costs you about $10,000 to fill that same swimming pool. Or if you were to use two-liter bottles of Coca-Cola or Pepsi, about $24,000. Milk could be about $30,000. Gasoline, $40,000. Yeah, we went all the way through up to Starbucks coffee, and this is just a regular coffee. This isn't anything extravagant, just their Pike's Place roast, grande cup of coffee. And we even went so far as to say, you know, if you were to just take, instead of filling your pool with liquids, filling it with bags of topsoil, 40-pound bags of topsoil, it would actually cost you $2,200 to do that with bags of topsoil from Home Depot. So, you know, it's just important, I think, to put some perspective on really the cost of water relative to other things and just how much we get for what we pay for water, you know, within the community. If you think about for $4.20 for JCSA, that gets you 1,000 gallons of water. But that same $4.20 would just get you one gallon of milk or a cup of coffee at Starbucks, not even, or maybe in today's prices, a loaf of bread or a small box of cereal. So, it's just, again, trying to put some of this in perspective that, you know, the level of service and the quantity of service being provided is a phenomenal value for the community, even after we have to make adjustments to keep pace with the cost of providing the service, it's still an incredible value compared to other things in our daily lives. We also did some benchmarking, just comparing the cost of our water service, so just the water portion of our bill to many other agencies in the area. And you can see our current bill is about $32 for water, with the adjustments for the first year for '26, it'd be about $34.90. And this is based on everyone else's rates today. We know that many will have rate adjustments for next fiscal year and beyond, you know, similar to the levels we're identifying here for JCSA, so we fully expect to remain very comparable on the cost of water service over time, as well as for sewer service. We're presently the lowest and would still be the lowest on sewer service with the proposed adjustments identified here. And again, expect to compare very favorably over time, as again, communities have increases typically on water and sewer service from year to year. When you snap these two things together, JCSA is the lowest-cost provider of water and sewer service. And if you stop to think about the level of increases that we had identified, maybe by 2029, we might get to the level of a bill of Virginia Beach and Smithfield today, about four years from now. And as part of just, you know, getting the information and preparing for the discussion today, I looked at last year, the average bill across the area last year was $70.70. So, it's gone up by about $4. So, again, when I say I'm expecting very comparable levels of increase to others to what we're talking about for JCSA, I, you know, especially just looking at one year from '24 to '25, it's bearing itself out. And so, I just want to give you some comfort, and no one likes doing rate adjustments, but, you know, the levels that we're talking about here today are very consistent with what we're seeing, not just locally, but also from a national perspective. And the last item I have for you is just a quick discussion on the facility fees. These fees are charges levied against growth and redevelopment to cover the cost of additional capacity that you have to build to be able to provide service to them. And so, these are based on the size of the meter for the service connection, and the current fees that are in place today have not increased since 2020. So, it's been a few years since they've been looked at, and so, as part of this study, we did look at the current unit cost of capital for the system, both existing and planned, to help update those facility fees. And so, you know, for a new connection that has water and sewer service, the increase in the fees would be a little over $1,000 or about 15% based upon the analysis that we've conducted. The fees would, again, vary based on meter size, but this is based on a typical residential connection. And again, from a benchmarking perspective, our fees are very comparable to other agencies locally. We didn't have a chance to expand the survey to be as robust as the water and sewer rates, but again, it was robust enough to give you a sense that our fees are and will be very comparable on the facility fees as well. So, just to recap, before I open it up for any questions and to support discussion, you know, we have identified a plan of annual increases that will be sufficient, based on our current projections, to meet our fund balance requirements and cash flow needs for operating and capital costs to reinvest in our infrastructure. And again, the way that the increases have been structured, it will adjust the fixed fees slightly more, which over time will enhance revenue stability for the systems. And for a typical user, that's gonna mean the bill would adjust by about $4.50 based upon the increases. And we do also recommend that you update the system facility fees to capture your current unit cost of capacity. This, again, can generate some additional revenue for the utility that minimizes costs that would otherwise have to be captured in rates for some of that capital investment. And so, with that, I'll be happy to open it up for questions and to support discussion.
They have questions? How many questions, Mr. Powell?
Basically, did exactly what we were looking for.
Right, he did, yeah.
Smoothed it right out.
Thank you for eveninging all that out. Looks much better.
I think it is gonna be important for us as we move forward to explain very clearly what the factors are that are driving the changes in cost. And, you know, in some sense, and Mr. Powell did an excellent letter for us to explain, to talk about our system versus some other places that are experiencing difficulty. We want to avoid those difficulties, if at all possible, and that means we've got to be prepared to make the investments in the equipment and the quality of water, and we can't really control the costs of some of these things, but we can also make clear to citizens that there are some ways that they can affect their own bill, their personal bill, by conserving. affect their own bill, their personal bill, by conserving, by getting more water-efficient appliances, things like that, so.
And I think it'll help too with knowing what's coming in the future. You know, we can kind of let the citizens know that these increases, just like everything, are coming. And this is what we're planning, this is what next year is going to look like, the following year, the following year. And it's neat the way you compared it to a gallon of milk and gasoline and everything else. May want to compare it to a meal in a food truck to kind of bring the two together.
No, that was very helpful. All of that was very helpful.
So, if you are comfortable with the recommendations that Mr. Burnham presented tonight in the rate study, I would recommend that you go ahead and authorize the public hearing for April 8, in which we would advertise the rates that have been presented tonight. There are two very small additions to that that I want to note that are not part of the rate study. One is just simply a proposed increase in the grinder pump maintenance fee, which we've been incrementally increasing every year now for several years. So, we would propose that fee go from $4.50 to $4.75. And then, lastly, we're recommending the implementation of an abandonment inspection fee of $200. So, those two fees in combination with what Mr. Burnham presented tonight would be the changes that would be advertised as part of the fiscal year '26 budget and rate schedule.
Do you need a motion?
I do need a motion.
Yeah, I'll move that motion.
Okay. Mr. Hippel?
Hi.
Ms. Larson?
Hi.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Hi.
Mr. Drisenhour?
Hi.
And Ms. Knoll?
Hi. Okay, do we have any discussions?
Andy, I think that concludes this item, and thank you very much for all of your work, and we'll be back in touch.
We appreciate it, Andy. Thank you.
Absolutely. Happy to help.
All right.
Have a good evening.
Yep, have a good night, Andy.
Take care.
Thank you.
And general manager's update, Mr. Powell?
I just briefly wanted to follow up on Mr. McGlinnan's comment about the message to the customers. It has been posted on our website. It will, there will be a link on the bill that is going out this week. And in short order, we will also email customers for whom we have an email address. We'll email it directly to them and we'll also put it out on some social media posts.
They're also putting out another one, right? I asked, did you put out the one that shows what each county, we're going to do that?
I, my plan was to do something similar when the budget comes out that would.
That'd be great, because I think they need to know what our neighbors are paying. Like, if you look at Chesapeake or Isle of Wight, you know, we're really blessed here. Okay. So, may I have a motion to adjourn to 5:00 PM on March 11 for a regular meeting? Thank you.
Mr. Hippel? Ms. Larson? Mr. McGlinnan? Mr. Drisenhour? And Ms. Knoll?
Hi. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.